We're going to call this meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome, everybody here. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All righty, I've asked Peter to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America, and together Republic where we stand, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we're going to have a quick prayer and we'll get rolling here, all righty. Lord, we thank you for this awesome day that you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. And we just thank you for all the beauty here, the green trees, the rain, the ocean, the bay, just all the natural beauty, the wildlife that's here. And we ask a special blessing over everybody that's here, those that are even watching on Zoom, but lead us and guide us and direct us in all that we do tonight, that we would bring honor and glory and praise to your name here in Alamoata, and that we would be unified, that we would be a unified community. And we just thank you for this awesome day again, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, council, requests for deletions or emergency additions? Mark? Henry? No? Elizabeth? Vice Mayor?
Guess it's me. I am, I guess, polling tab nineteen and twenty. Is now the time to do that, Jennifer?
Sure.
So, and I'd like to move it to a time specific, is that right?
Yes, in order to avoid additional advertising costs and stuff, she'd like to continue to a date, time, and place certain.
Okay.
Which I believe you said you would like December.
December would be fine. Thank you.
The twelfth.
Okay, December the twelfth.
Anything else?
Um, yes. I also have a request that I'm starting to look into legal for us, for the village, and the first thing we need to decide is if we want an in-house or a out attorney like we have. And I realize that that's a totally different, a lot of work to do, so I want to table the request for an RFP for the attorneys until the new council comes on, as there's going to be at least three, if not four, new members. So I would like to table that. Is now the time to do that? And does it, is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
I know, I would prefer not to. I think this, a lot of work has been done since your request, and I would prefer to see it move forward. It sounds like it's already been, it's underway, so I'd like to see it move forward.
Well, I was, it's not really underway yet. And again, to put out an RFP, we have to decide if we're looking for an in-house or an out. And so there's two totally different, so.
I, I think I heard John mention when this came up at the last meeting before I left early, that if he is to be considered as one of the bidders on the RFP, then we would need to retain an outside law firm to draft the RFP, because it would be a conflict for him to do that. So between now and then, it might be a good idea to search for one, just a suggestion. I won't be here.
I do still move to table it until the new council, because it's going to affect the new people on council.
Okay.
And I think it's only fair.
Do we have a second? Do we need to vote on it, John, or take, have a lot of consensus?
I mean, you could do the way, but there's a motion that's been made.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second to hold, to table this for Wyserota? Are you?
I'm just here.
Huh?
I'm just listening. It wasn't my motion to begin with.
Okay, all right, all right. So I'll second that motion, then. I'll go ahead and second it. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
No.
And Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
The motion passes three to two.
On the deferral on the quadri judicial items, we would need a motion for that, too. That, that was the request from Vice Mayor Mahoney. It would be a motion to defer tabs.
Nineteen and twenty?
Nineteen and twenty to the village council meeting on, scheduled on December 12th, starting at 5:30 in this same location.
Is that the first one for the new council, or?
Second one.
Yeah, second one, yes.
Okay. Yeah, do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, based upon the.
Will I make the motion?
You can make the motion, and you can vote on it, because it's, it's just strictly a scheduling motion.
Is this just the one item?
This is, this is Sharon's item.
Yeah, she, she has two items, but, but they're all, they're, you know, sister items.
Right, so we're dealing with both of them at the same time?
Yes.
So is, is, just to be, can you help me understand, it's the applicant is asking, it's, the applicant is asking to remove it?
Correct, yes.
So we still need to move to, we still need a motion there, even though she just asked to remove it?
Yes, correct, because it didn't, the request didn't come in, there's a ten-day, seven, sorry, seven-day deadline where it's an automatic deferral. After that, it's, it's done by motion.
Okay. All right, do I hear a second to, to move it?
I'm just curious, does Sharon get to vote on this?
Yes.
Oh, because it's procedural.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. So, Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen. Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I say one thing real quick? I would like to let everybody know how wonderful our fire chief, Terry Abel, is, that I've been working with theater to see about the dust from the pipeline, and there has been quite a few issues. And we needed water last night, and at 10 o'clock, we called Terry and said, we need a fire truck, and we need water on, on the dirt pile. And he got out of bed and got it done. So I thank you, the Dolphins thank you, and you're a wonderful person for the community. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.[1021.31][1021.31](applause) And I think the Aqueduct thanks you, too, big times. All right? Okay, yes?
Just to piggyback on what Vice Mayor said, I thought people might want to know, I think our fire chief is being recognized tomorrow by the county commission as an honorable, honorary conk, is that right, Chief Abel?
Yes.
Yeah, so I thought you all might want to know that.
What's an honorary conk?[1050.01][1050.01](laughter)
Well, I, yeah, I think he's married to one.
I think he is, too. So it's a conk through marriage.
Oh, he married in. Okay. Where is that going to be, chief? Come up to the mic and tell us where it's going to be, please. And hey, there, you can tell us about the 9/11 service tomorrow, too, I believe, at Station 20?
Yes, sir.
9:45?
Correct. So, yes, everyone, please, if you're out and about and you have the availability tomorrow morning, as the start is 9:45 prompt, we'll be having a 9/11 ceremony for the 23rd memorial of it. At Station 20, 818-50, please come on out. We'll have the mayor speaking, House Representative Mooney, and of course, Pastor Hammond will be doing our invocation. So if you're available and you're around, please come on out. And I will be at the Murray Nelson, I guess, at nine for my honorary conk certificate, so.
Oh, we can't go, because we gotta be down there.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to double down, but you never know. Drive fast, take chances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't break the speed limit, though.[1124.41][1124.41](laughter) Okay. Okay, anything else from the council before we move on? So we're going to move on to reports, presentations, and announcements. And I believe the first thing, and Elizabeth, if you would like to, I mean, I, I would gladly read these, but if you, because you, you sure?
(inaudible)
Okay, well, I'm willing to let you, if you'd like to read them. Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you for giving.
Okay, I would gladly. So, I'm going to read the proclamation of September 23rd through the 29th, 2024, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week, all right? So if you bear with me, I'm going to try to see and read, and, and then I'd like to have the representatives come forward, please. All right, proclamation, National Diaper Need Awareness Week, September of 2024. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, healthy, can adversely affect the health of wellbe, health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing diapers, changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally, generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to an insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and healthy problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical cost. And parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or to school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the people of Alamoata recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's families and communities and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families to have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Alamoata is proud to be home, to be trusted, community-based organizations, including the Florida Keys Healthy Start Coalition and Miami Di, Miami Diaper Bank, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. And whereas though their important work of addressing diaper need, the Florida Keys Healthy Start Coalition and their partnership with the Miami Diaper Bank play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing our local and state economy growth. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joseph B. Pender III, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Alamoata, village of the islands, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through September 29th as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in Alamoata. Village of Alamo, Village of Islands thank the aforementioned coalition, diaper bank, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crisis, and encourage the citizens of Alamoata to donate generously to the Florida Keys Healthy Start Coalition. Diaper Banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all of Alamoata's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and the official seal of Alamoata, the Village of Islands. Thank you very much. Come on up, and we need, they want to get a picture, so, okay?[1446.91][1446.91](applause)
Give them a diaper.[1451.83][1451.83](laughter)
Give this to you.[1458.83][1458.83](laughter)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1476.83][1476.83](applause)
Okay, now we're going to move on to tab two. And I think we have some people here from, for the Senior Citizen Week, from the Joy Center. Do we have some people here? I don't, who wants to, would like to come to the mic, or all of y'all that are here can come and receive. I'm going to read your proclamation right now.
One more?
Yep, right there. Yep. I know there's some others. You all are welcome to come, all right? Proclamation, National Senior Citizens Month, September of 2024. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas the Joy, just older you think, Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, the energy, vitality, and commitment of older residents of the Upper Keys. And whereas the Joy Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people aged 50 and older, many with underlying medical conditions were able to stay safe, connected with their community, and less likely to experience pandemic-related loneliness and isolation. And whereas the Joy Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to our community. And I'm, I'm gonna stop right there, man. I want to say, actually, I, I call it growing bolder, not older, okay? We need to be growing bolder. And we, we, at the Florida League of Mayors, we actually, we had a guy that spoke on that, and there was people in their 90s that were doing swim meets. One lady sold her, her, did a reverse mortgage on her house. The guy, she outlived the guy that bought her mortgage. She lived to be 122 years old. All right, so, and you know, some of these people, like the man that barefoot waterski, they call him Mr. Banana. And he was 93, and he was bedridden, all right? But he told his wife that he wanted to get out and barefoot waterski one more time, all right? And you know what? He did it. We saw the video of him skiing in Winter Haven, okay? So I just wanted to throw down there, because it was a very, very touching thing that the Florida League of Mayors Board of Directors put on for us about growing bolder. All right, and I'll finish reading this.
We're, we're still kicking, just not quite as high.
What's that?
We're still kicking, but just not quite as high.
Okay. Okay. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joseph B. Pender III, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Alamoata, village of the islands, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Senior Center, Senior Center Month, and call upon all the village citizens, council members, and officials to recognize the special contributions of the Joy Center and the two days of activities they provide at the new Plantation Key Community Center, with the goal of a full-time, five-day-a-week Joy Center to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the official seal of Alamoata Village of Islands. And I will sign it and come present it. Rob, if you want to come get a picture?
Sure.
Would you like for you to receive it?
Please.
All right, I'll take a picture.
Y'all want to come up?
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
He doesn't bite, I swear.[1766.83][1766.83](laughter)
Everybody hold on to that.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you, guys. Thank you for what you do.[1787.83][1787.83](applause)
Thank you so much.
So I'm reading.
Mr. Mayor, as a newly member of the
Mr. Mayor, as a newly member of the sixty-five and up club, I just wondered, is there any relation between the first presentation about diapers and then the second line about being senior? I just find that timing to be a bit too coincidental there.
Yeah. Yeah, man, you're not kidding, man. Okay, so we got, let me just make sure we got it here. Okay, proclamation, okay. So with that being said, we're going to now move to open public comment. Marnie, do we have any speakers?
We do. We have several. We're starting with Barry Ray.
Hi, I'm Barry Ray from Alamoata. It's wonderful to see a meeting start with so much joy. Good job. Good job to everybody. It's rather nice. So I want to bring up something that I've spoken with a couple of council members about. The other day I was walking through the park here, like I do most days, and the lightning alarm went off. And my applause to Maria, they've got a new lightning system in, so better safety here. But the problem was that nothing changed. Kids kept playing, coaches kept coaching, and then you realize, where would they go anyway? They have no place to go. Under a tree? Not advisable. So what, one of the things I do with my job, I design things that survive lightning and still keep working, right? The systems I design have to work outside. They're all solar powered, they're independent powered, and they get hit by lightning now and then, and they have to survive. Well, we can build shelters that do the same thing. They're called Faraday cages, right? By putting a metal roof on it and grounding that properly and then isolating the slab at the bottom, they're protected. And it also doubles as a shade shelter, which several parents had mentioned to me over the last couple of years. Be nice to have some more shade out here. So what I would like to propose is that before we get, you know, entrenched in the master plan and all of that, that we take this on as a very important and safety factor, public safety factor, in our village. I coach kids all the time, and I felt very vulnerable when I looked out there and they had no place to go, even though the lightning alarm was going off. Now, I talked to Maria about advising them, you need to go somewhere. You don't sit there and keep playing, you know? But that's a different issue. That's, that's an advisory issue, but we do need these shelters. And I would ask that we refer this over to the Parks Committee and ask them to expedite some planning. I'm more than willing to talk to them about what's needed. Just need the invite when their next meeting is and everything, but I would ask that you guys would direct them to move forward on this posthaste and that we provide a sufficient number of shelters, provide protection for our children that are out there playing, coaching, our parents that are watching the game, they can have some shade. And the facilities, once they're built, they'll serve a lot. Four shelters, probably under a hundred grand, honestly, just for shelters like this that have no sides and just have a cement slab, it's not very expensive. But I'll let the construction people quote that to us. Thank you. That's all I came for tonight. I do have more good things shortly, and I hope to bring those up, but in another method. Have a great meeting. I need to run to an art opening down at our library. So if you get a chance, go see Marciya Brito's environmental display on her art at Alamoata Library. Thank you much.
Good evening.
Next up is Joe Ziemek.
Thank you. Twenty-five years in Village of Islands. It's still going strong. Interesting about the tribute we've just done to senior citizens. Why don't we listen to them? I'm a senior citizen. Does anyone listen to me? No? We have senior citizens here who are retired CEOs, all kinds of bright people, and nobody cares. And they're free. Why don't you take a look at some of those senior citizens? Anyway, I started off with my comments today are quite simple. First of all, there is a note from our village manager, very nicely done. He said that the ten in the village of two-point-eight was passed will result in a ten percent increase in revenue and only a dollar-five increase in taxes annually for immediate assessed single-family homes. What's a median assessed family home getting only a dollar tax increase? We're missing something there. Now, it might be a typo, sir, but, but what's the median assessed village home here? Is it a million dollars? You only got a buck increase? Very good. Okay. Now, the other thing is, some of my remarks are maybe a little nasty, but they're not. They're nothing personal, just business. You're running a business, not a village. It's a business, okay? And some of you people are business people. So first of all, I asked at my last meeting here, you had fifteen trucks sitting out there, what do they do? Nobody looked at me, nobody said anything. Does anyone know what those fifteen trucks do? You know, who signs them out? Who pays the gas bill? Who pays the insurance bill? Three of them got replaced with brand-new trucks for another reason. What was that? No idea. No answer. What are they doing? Okay? Five whys. I said to our financier, what's five whys? She said, I know what it is. Has anyone thought about five whys? Our village manager began to question some of the things last week. Why, why, why? Congratulations. It's a very powerful technique. And for example, I was reading over the village manager, supposed to be the consul's supposed to create the budget and you're supposed to manage it. Have you created the budget for him to manage or are you reacting to his budget? Question. It's procedural. Okay? And let's see, the last thing I wanted to say was that us old guys have been around the horn. Why don't you take advantage of it? Okay? Why not? It's free. Okay? You pay your lobbyists a hundred thousand dollars a year and nobody asks them to do anything. So take advantage of us old guys. We've been there, we've been through the wars, we've been taken to task by some really bright people, so take advantage of it. And by the way, we're old and crotchety and we're free.
Thank you, Joe. All right, Marnie, anybody? Who's next?
Next up is Van Cadenhead.
Good evening, council. I'm Van Cadenhead, and I'm one of those older youth that they were talking about. And whenever anybody asks me, boxers or briefs? I always say, depends. I'd like to comment on a place I went to last night at the Coral Isles Church was a presentation by John Rizzo from the Weather Service in Key West. And he made a very strong case for hurricane prediction and, and made the, there was a discussion after about the amount of BPAS that we should be asking for to increase the population of Monroe County. And my impression was that we should not be asking for any BPAS. We should be trying to limit any building that we do here to redevelopment and not new development. And because if, if we were to, he was talking about rapid intensification of storms, and Irma was one of those. We had people coming from Key West trying to get to the Georgia Line and all the way up the turnpike, people were running out of gas, there was no hotel rooms, and we were just by the grace of God alone that we didn't have that hurricane come right over the turnpike because it would have left all those vulnerable people out in the wind. And you hear stories about refuge of last resort. Well, they don't tell you about the refuge of last resort until six hours before the hurricane hits, which is not really doing a heck of a lot of good. And having a place to go, a lot of people shelter in place. That's another pale phrase. Because sheltering in place, I mean, if you're living in a, in a house that's below the floodplain, that's not going to help you a whole lot. And there's no place for you to go if suddenly the intensification goes from a tropical storm, possibly hurricane category one, all of a sudden into a three or a four. There's just too many people here and not enough ways to get them out. We've got one road that goes out, US one, and you only talk about the discussion about Monroe County evacuation and emergency. You don't talk about what happens at the county line north because Miami Dade County has let their growth get out from under them. And there's eight thousand new affordable housing units being built right behind the Last Chance Saloon at Florida City. Where do you think all those people are going to be when the hurricane hits? They're going to be sitting home, sheltering in place, they're going to be trying to get to the Georgia Line along with everybody else. So I'm just saying, with your growth. Yes, sir. With your, with your growth projections, I hope you keep that in mind when you vote on building projects. Thank you very much.
Marnie, do we have anybody else?
Yep. Next up is Tom Raffinello.
Thank you. Tom Raffinello, Alamoata. Number one, I was very impressed with Joe Steimek and what he had to say. I'm closer to eighty than I am to seventy-five, and a lot of us have done a lot of different things that fit right into what you're doing. So it would be wise to talk to people that have done it and then some before. I want to address something, kind of a simple precept that I used throughout a management career in eleven different cities. And that was managing for the greater good, not for the greater money you're going to make, not for the greater things you can do for your friends, for the greater good, which means sometimes a little personal sacrifice on your own part. I used to meet with my people, send Q and As with them, talk about different, different rules or different things I was going to impose or federal regulations that I was told to impose. I would talk about it with them, I would answer their questions as best as I could, and I would try and have them share the priorities and get into ownership with what we're doing. It's, it's a big part of transparency. It leads to this, for the life of me, I can't understand why you have been so draconian about keeping public comment away from these meetings. Do you know who they are? They're the people that put you there. If they're a real pain in the ass, then get another job. I just can't believe that you're not trying to get more people to talk about different things rather than less. If somebody abuses it, shut them down. But you can't make good informed decisions without knowing what they're thinking and what they want to say. If they don't have ownership, it's going to be a failure. You know, don't discourage them. Restore it. You've got time, you've got a few months left where you can do that. We took some rules from the county, and you see how well the county's doing. They're not doing very well. Don't imitate people that you don't want us to take care, advantage of. They're just, they're not making it. If you, you've got several months, I'd like to see you take advantage of it. But another thing that we used to say, and I still say, that if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. So think about that when you're making decisions. I have one more thing that really piqued me. And I'm, I'm with Elizabeth on this. I would vigorously, I had three attorneys that worked for me in Miami. So I've had them before, I know that three attorneys could give you three different opinions. And if you don't give them explicit instruction, then they're going to run you. So I think that we should do an RFP, we should do it immediately, and we should have an in-house attorney. And I have nothing against this gentleman. I think he's a fine gentleman, he works to the best of his ability. But we spent seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars.
Let's wrap it up, please.
Yeah, okay. Let me get this point across. We spent seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars on legal and the U.S. Supreme Court Justice makes three-hundred thousand. We're not doing a good job at managing the attorney. I'd like to see you do a better job. I got tons of things I want to talk about, but not today. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Marnie, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we have Mr. Wishmeyer on Zoom. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wishmeyer.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Mr. Mayor and Council, I would like to discuss a brief history of council meetings and schedules. Council meetings used to be held on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Then you change it to once a month. Could not understand why due to the length of the meetings, but after finally realizing that the meetings were overwhelming and very long, council voted to go back to two meetings a month. We thought that was a great idea. Unfortunately, you decided to make them only two days apart. In retrospect, this puts your staff, council members, and the public under tremendous stress trying to put together agenda packets, council to read and research packets, and the public trying to do the same thing with meetings only two days apart. In the last five months, for example, two meetings had over a thousand pages. That would be April and August. One of them, over eight hundred pages. That would be in June. Putting due diligence and understanding in that many pages puts an undue burden on all individuals involved. I believe that it would be in the best interest of everyone if you went back to the meetings spread apart like it used to be. Even when there are shorter meetings, like May, only five hundred pages, July ninth on one-hundred-and-seventy-four pages, and then canceling the eleventh meeting because, well, we didn't have anything left, it seems that long-lasting and lingering issues fail to be on the agenda or discussed. For example, when was the last time you discussed items like, oh, I don't know, strategic planning, new council training details? What are you going to give them? How are you going to go about it? TDRs? The draft was expected on September the twelfth, but it's not even on the agenda. The noise ordinance? We even had a workshop on that one. The fills? Well, that's self-explanatory, just to name a few. The Thursday meetings are listed as land use council meetings. Doesn't that mean that Tuesday meetings should be for all other items and all items include involving land should be on Thursdays? Please use all of yours and our time appropriately and get things that are lingering addressed. I am looking forward to the interviews for the comprehensive plan update. This will be a major decision that will affect us all for the next twenty years. Let's take our time and do it correctly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, public comment is now closed. So we will move on to citizen advisory committee reports. Diane, you're first.
Good evening, council. Diane Harbaugh, Near Shore Water Committee. Our committee met on July thirtieth, and we have a new staff member that's at our meetings now. Her name is Alyssa, and she was very knowledgeable. Pete was there as well, and we welcome her to our committee. The committee heard public comment during, regarding the proposed Sunset Drive vessel exclusion zone during our public comment period at the beginning of our meeting. Then we went on to our agenda. There was no report from the Sheriff's Department because we had just gone through the change of the Sheriff's Departments, but we are looking forward to seeing them at our next meeting. The committee heard an update from the staff on the Founders Park Breakwater Project. The improvements have started and look like they're going very well, actually. And they're expected to be completed by the end of the year. The committee revisited the idea of additional mooring ball installation to accommodate intermediate to heavy recreational use at, out along the breakwater, but need to research this area further and discuss a proposal before making any recommendations to the council. The Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary rulemaking is expected to wrap up later this fall. That would be 2024. Keep your fingers crossed. And the committee discussed the temporary regulations for coral restoration and nursery areas that have been proposed by NOAA due to the potential marine heat wave that we were having at that time. We discussed the status of Whale Harbor Channel, the idle speed zone at Whale Harbor and the South Channel. This is a private property owner issue, and they're willing to place signs up there. They'll need to source the signs, and we are willing to help them get the correct signs to put up there. But that is going to be a private owner solution. We also discussed there is some missing signage in the idle speed zone going out of Whale Harbor Channel, and that is all done by the county. So we are going to contact the county and see if they can help get those put back in. We heard an update on the Tavernier Creek slow speed zone that would take that all the way to the end of Tavernier Creek on the bayside. And the extension proposal is in the permitting process with FWSC at this time, and looks like that's going to go through. this time, and looks like that's going to go through. We discussed the boating impacts to the Papa Joe's area. If you sit at the brand-new Papa Joe's bar and look at that beautiful sunset, you're looking directly over a flat. And a lot of people don't realize that that's very shallow water there. But there is a planned installation of some bird stake poles in that area. And then Alyssa informed us that there's signage going up through the state, because that's Lignemide State Park area where that where that water is. So they're actually going to put signage up, so it kind of gets us off the hook, and we'll see how that works out. The committee discussed the proposed new vessel exclusion zone at Sunset Drive Beach. The majority of the committee voted to recommend that the council does not consider a new vessel exclusion zone at Sunset Drive, and instead focuses on long-term planning and management for all nearshore areas in Alamoata. And what that means is we would like to see this placed on your agenda, probably after the first of the year with the new council in place, to talk about what's, we just can't keep squeezing that balloon, as I said at the last one. We really need to try to come to a solution, and we'd like to see council put that on the agenda. And that concludes my report.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Diane?
No, but do we want to put this on the after-action report? The vessel exclusion zone? I think that's a pretty great recommendation. It is.
Thank you, Peter. Diane, thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Okay, okay. All right. So let's see. All right. So we're going to move on then to Mayor-Council Communications. And Henry, you're up about discussing the "Welcome to Alamoata" sign.
A number of years ago, it was very obvious to me that why people came here, and some people just came back every year for one reason, was to fish. In those years, very few fishermen brought their families like they do today. They usually came by themselves. They came with a big amount of dollars, had a good time at night, had a good time during the day. And we were noted as the fishing capital of the world, sports fishing capital of the world. And I walked around, and I asked a few people besides the ones that were fishing, "Have you ever heard of that?" And they said, "No." So I said to myself, "It's about time that we make note of that." It's not determined when you come into Alamoata or leave from each area. So I put up a sign. I put up a sign by the Chesapeake Motel between the Old Road and US-1. It said, "Welcome to Alamoata, the sports fishing capital of the world." And on the back, I think it said, "Don't forget your keys."
That was right there where the Old Road came right on the highway, right? We're crossing Publix now.
Right.
I remember it.
I had it lit at night. In fact, there it is.
Right.
I put a roof on it, and it was there for a number of years. I guess a storm took it out. Quite frankly, I don't recall. But since I'm kind of limited as to my days here on in this chair, this is one of the things that I took note of. I think I would like to have it replaced, and I would like to have the support of the council and the staff to do that. So if you agree with me, I appreciate your thinking about it. And that's my presentation.
Okay, do we do we have one up at Tavernier Creek now when you come in? There was one there, but not like the one he did.
It says, "Welcome to Alamoata." That's all it says.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right.
What is your pleasure?
Do you want to answer right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Public comment?
Can you take public comment?
I mean, I guess we can. It's not normally, we don't under Village Man, I mean, Mayor-Council Communication.
All right, man. I think you just got approved.
I'd like to step in behind Henry and bolster his argument, because for one thing, when Isla Marada was just on Upper Matticombi Key when I was growing up, that sign was iconic. When you came over the Whale Harbor Bridge, that's what you saw when the highway split right there. And it said, it was friendly. It said, "Don't forget your keys," and it had a picture of keys in the back, so that everybody leaving on the backside of that sign could read, "Don't forget your keys." Immediately upon the incorporation of Isla Marada, the sign went up to Tavernier Creek and said nothing about the sport fishing capital of the world. And on the back of the sign, it said, "Catch you later." Now, to me, that's a distinctly unfriendly emotion to put to see people on their way out of town. Catch you later. I mean, that that you could take that as fishing language, or you could take it as a policing language. Catch you later. Come to Isla Marada on vacation, leave on probation. That's not the that's not the kind of attitude that I think Isla Marada should project to the visitors here. And so I hope you listen to what Henry said. I would really like to see that sign back lit and with with a friendly message on the back. "Don't forget your keys," not "Catch you later." Thank you.
Thank you, man. All right. Anybody else in here want to speak, since we opened public comment? Anybody want to speak on it? Okay, public comment's now closed. Henry, I will say a few things. When you know, when I saw that sign, I think of Dick Poe coming here to fish. I think of Ted Williams, okay? I think of all the people fishing with Cecil, Keith, Jimmy Albright, Dick Williams, Joe Poor, Raleigh Hollenback, Jack Brothers, and, you know, Mr. Holly that owned Alamoata Yacht Basin. I mean, the Twitchels, that was part of the reason why Ms. Twitchell built Chica, so her girlfriends could come here as a club and go fishing. So offshore and backcountry. You can see Cynthia and Carl's pictures in there where you walk to the the bathroom still today. There were a lot of pictures of Jimmy Albright and Cecil and but I'm I'll, I'd back you up on it. But I, you know, I think it's a great thing.
I got two.
I don't know if we could do it, but we could even, we could even around, you know, because I've seen some signs that have, they have like rocks at the bottom and planters and stuff. But I don't know if we could put some older queen conchs, you know, because this was a whole fishing community, whether it's conking, or lobstering, or turtling, or sponging, whatever it was, Alamoata, you know, it, hey, the the Matticombi Club was congressmen, senators, we had presidents come here. They're the first one to ever brought power to our community. We're the guys from DC. So, all right, okay. So I think, do we need to take a vote on it, John, or just give a consensus, or?
I think a consensus is fine. If you want to take a formal vote, you can. But I think, you know, Rob is is hearing the direction, and I assume he will start exploring the location to make, you know, make sure to see if we, based on where I think it is, it's across from the Reefside Stables, right? Like that area, or is it further north?
This one was across, this is where, right across where Publix was.
So, yeah, I mean, the only thing.
That's where you saw it. Because, see, before, it used to be that was Upper Matticombi, but that's Alamoata. This was Plantation Key. We didn't, it wasn't all the village.
The only reason, I just say, you know, obviously, Rob will look into and staff will look into, you know, making sure where we can put it and working with, if we have to work with FDOT, we will. But, I mean, unless, Rob, do you feel you need a formal motion on it?
No, I'm fine. We have direction, and we'll see where we can place it with the least conflict with FDOT, so we don't end up with Clear Zone infractions and things of that nature. And we'll get pricing for a sign. And Councilman Rosenthal, if you could forward me a copy of that picture, just so I'll have that as well. That would be great. Thank you, sir.
Just to move the meeting on, I'll say thank you, and we'll move forward.
You're keeping the keys to keys, Henry. Alamoata.
That's right.
Oh, my goodness. Yep. Okay, so let's see.
I do have a comment coming up next, directed to the manager. I would like to have a two-second update as to where we are on the fills.
Okay, so we're going to move on to that right now, Henry. And he can do, this is, so we're moving on to Village Attorney-Village Manager Communications.
Right.
And it says there are none, no items, but he's asking for one. Okay.
Sure. I'll go ahead and provide a brief update. The fills is still in discussions between staff, the DEP, and FDOT. As it stands right now, we've recently submitted our permit revisions to reflect that the DEP is looking to manage the site at the Indian Key Bridge to provide for a kayak launch. Sounds like FDOT is supportive of that, and the village is not standing in the way of that, of course, because we no longer are renewing our lease with the DEP because of the constraints surrounding our continuing management of that. And there is a FDOT lease that does expire at the end of September. However, it continues until its successor agreement is is instituted. And FDOT has expressed that they'd like to work through the permit request before we modify the lease, because the lease has terms and conditions that relate to the spaces we're seeking to abandon. So we're right in the middle of that. I spoke with FDOT as recently as last week, and actually today even, just to double check and make sure we're on the same path. And if there's any change in that, I'll update council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. Any council, anybody else have any questions for John or for Rob Cole? Okay, so with that being said, that's taken care of. Let's move on to the consent agenda. John?
We're into the consent portion of the agenda. These items are of routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are Tabs four through 15 in your agenda book. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now.
Counsel?
I don't care to pull anything, but I have to make the comment. Throughout the consent agenda, it continually says that the waiver of competitive building, bidding is not effective. And I just have a problem with that. We should have bidding on absolutely everything. If it's prohibited, at least you could put in there, "We tried. Nobody applied," et cetera, et cetera. But what the waiver's written in here is, "We just didn't decide to do it." I just feel that any opportunity that we can have to write a letter just for competitive bidding, it should be done on everything. So I just want to make that comment. I don't know how many items there are that have been nullified, but there's two on this page, there's three on this page. There's throughout the whole consent agenda. Just for the sake of comment, with a resolution is actually going to be Tab 16. I just have a problem with okaying something, and then you then you're going to talk about it later on with the tab. That seems to be asked backwards to me. So if you want to do it that way, listen, I'm only here for a few more weeks. Have fun. But I just have a question as to the way the system is right now. You're voting to approve everything, and then you're going to talk about it later. Doesn't seem the right direction. So if I'm wrong, I'm open for comment, that's for sure. But I have to make that comment. I'm on my way out. I have to talk about everything I can very quickly. So that's that's where I am, see? So anyway, I just, I have to make that comment, because we should, every opportunity, put it out. You have, you don't, you never know. I mean, my private practice, I've asked questions, and I thought, nah, nobody's going to pay attention to that. Instead of a gun, the guy I wound up choosing, he was the last guy. It happens. So anyway, I just, I have to make that make that comment. I hope I didn't extend the meeting, because everybody wants to get out of here early tonight.
You're fine, Henry.
But anyway.
All right. Anybody other council have anything they'd like to say about it before I open public comment? Go ahead.
I just wanted, just a point of clarification. Tab 16 is not on the consent agenda. That's that's going to be considered separately and independently.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution separate from consent. And then Rob also asked me while I was speaking to to just confirm that that for any waivers of competitive bidding, obviously, we look to confirm that it is in compliance
Okay.
with the local code and state law and federal law to the extent it applies.
All right. So public comment is now open. Do we have any public comment, Marnie, for consent agenda?
No one has signed up for this.
No one signed up? Okay. Counsel, we have any further discussion, or do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? All right. Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, John, help me. We are now on to 16, which is a resolution, correct?
Yes, yep, 16. It's a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marata Village of Islands, Florida, approving a one-year renewal of the Agreement for Professional State Lobbying Services between Gray Robinson, PA, and Isla Marata Village of Islands, authorizing village officials to implement the terms and conditions of the professional services agreement, authorize a village manager to expend budget funds, authorize a village manager to execute the professional services agreement, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, and providing for an effective date. And the folks from Gray Robinson are here as well.
Joseph, yeah. Okay, public comment is open. Do we have anybody, Marnie?
Yes, Van Cadenhead.
Okay.
Van Cadenhead again. This underlines what Henry just said. And Henry's been asking, "What has Gray Robinson done for us lately?" And they said, "Well, you didn't give us an agenda of anything you wanted." Well, I hope that's going to be corrected from the staff, and I hope we're going to give them an agenda of things that we'd like them to address. And and once again, my my trepidation is the fact that Gray Robinson is so big all over the state of Florida, and they also represent Big Sugar. And to me, Big Sugar and the Keys are at odds as far as interests. So it seems to be a conflict of interest, because, I mean, I imagine there's, there's one section of their office that deals with Big Sugar, and there's certain lawyers in in their office that deal with Monroe County. But it's just, it's like having the fox in charge of the chicken coop. I would really like to see someone from South Florida that has interests and and connections in Tallahassee work for us and and not have to split their their time between Big Sugar and Monroe County, because Big Sugar and Monroe County are in a conflict that's not likely to to cease anytime soon. So I think we should definitely put out an RFP, just like Henry said, and get three, three people to step up to be the lobbyists and see what they're, what they can offer. Gray Robinson has been, you know, a good firm. They've done a lot of good for us. But by the same token, I think they've been underutilized because of failure of the the council. The council has not given them various goals to address in the course of a year. So that's why we've not been able to pull the trigger on a lot of things we could have. So that's, that's my comment, and thank you very much.
Marnie, do we have anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Mr. Cole, I would like to thank you personally for working with Ryan and Joseph. I know you've given me many reports, as I assume that he has to each one of us. But Mr. Cole has definitely been in contact with our lobbyists in in trying to do what what Henry had asked for. But if anybody else would like to speak, I know, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just curious if we could hear from you about how you are working with the group.
Sure. First of all, a point of clarification, and check First of all, a point of clarification, in checking with Gray Robinson, just as a matter of fact, they do not represent Big Sugar. So I think that comment has been made at public comment a couple of different times, so I just want to clear the record on that matter. With respect to my interactions with Gray Robinson and Ryan and his team, they've been very accessible to me. A recent example of having reached out to them was when Florida State Parks announced that they were going to be developing some of the parks here in Florida with golf courses and pickleball and other kinds of recreational uses that are valuable to communities and the state of Florida, but do not belong in some of our natural areas of the state parks. So that's just one recent example, and there's other things that we engage with Ryan and his team on a semi-routine basis. If I were to guesstimate, you know, just in the last 30 days, there had to have been at least, you know, four to five different things that I've reached out to Ryan. And even when he's traveling on vacation, he is still responding and getting his team engaged on questions that require support up in Tallahassee. And I would rate his team as highly effective, having worked with lobbyists in larger communities, including both at the state level and in Washington, DC. And so my experience with this team is at least on par, and I would arguably state it's better than some of the lobbyists that I've worked with in the past. So it's a great team, and I would highly recommend continuing our relationship with them.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, go ahead, Elizabeth.
So have you advanced the legislative priorities that we were working on, I guess in, was it July or August, July?
We have not advanced legislative priorities, because we're waiting for the budget to be completed, at which point we're going to, as we might have, as I believe we did mention at that time, what we'll do is we'll take our budget and the capital projects that are approved in it, and speak to Ryan and his team, as well as our team in DC, to see what grant opportunities are available. The other thing we were waiting on is for some of our community partners to finish their legislative agendas, so that we could see what they're looking at for the upcoming legislative session, and try to express support for some of their key initiatives that relate to those that were shared by the village council. So once those pieces come together, we'll have a final document, and that would be transmitted to Gray Robinson, and some cut sheets that really speak in very brief fashion to our key priorities, that we're looking to particularly find funding support for either directed funding from our state legislators or grant programs. So that's still to come, but we're coming up on the cusp of when those things should be ready to advance. Thank you for reminding folks of that. It's an important task.
Anybody else have anything?
You say that there's a member here from Gray Robinson?
There's two members there.
Why don't they give us a presentation?
Well, Mr. Cole, I mean, they will gladly talk.
Yeah, I can't criticize you if you'll tell me something, you know?
So, hey, Ryan, before you talk, I just want to say that, you know, both you guys, Joseph showed me his picture of his eighth-month-old daughter, man. Okay, so congratulations, guy, you know, new papa, you know, it's all your travels and everything, both of you. I know you guys got kids, so anyway.
No, appreciate.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate the time. And councilman, we don't have a formal presentation, happy to answer questions as they arise. Joseph Salzberg, Ryan Matthews, Gray Robinson, I think we both have had the pleasure of representing the village for roughly around eight years now. Joseph is located in Miami, so he is somewhat local, regionally local, I guess I would call him. I am, in fact, in the Tallahassee office. And again, I think that Mr. Cole has already discussed, there has been a consistent pattern of communication that has been established. Quite frankly, that hasn't always been the case, right? And so we've discussed that in some of your individual time in Tallahassee in the past, but I feel very optimistic about the, again, frequency of communication that we have had with Mr. Cole. Again, my advisement to you all is that please utilize us, not only with the legislature, but also with the executive agencies in Tallahassee. Mr. Cole has reached out to us about the Phils, the conversations that you've had with DOT and DEP, because we can engage with those offices in Tallahassee. And so again, the legislative workshop that you all had in June, we stand ready and willing to implement your desires and the new council's desires as you move forward, both from an executive agency and legislative standpoint. Just to give you an idea, the legislature will be in Tallahassee for committee weeks in December. The House and Senate have individual committee weeks in the first two weeks of December. There will be about four subsequent other meetings leading up to the March 2025 start of the legislative session. So there is still time to implement that legislative agenda that you all have worked on, and we stand really ready and willing to do so.
And Ryan, give us a little history, because you used to be on the other side. You were the secretary of DEP under, I believe, Rick Scott, right?
I was, yes.
So give us a little history real quick about when you
Personal history, and I'll let Joseph talk a little bit about his work history. So I actually started in advocacy under municipal associations. I worked for the Florida League of Cities for about six years. Both in their general council's office and their legislative advocacy platform, I worked for the Florida League of Cities. I then moved on to DEP, where I was the director of the Office of Water Policy overseeing the water management districts. I was the deputy secretary of regulatory programs, so all air, water, and waste permits that came in through the state. And then I was interim secretary of DEP for about five months during the tenure of Governor Scott, then left private practice. Have worked in a niche local government lobbying firm, People Smith &amp; Matthews, which held a contract with the Village of Isle of Maratha. And then we merged with Gray Robinson about three years ago, so.
Thank you, Ryan. Joseph, you want to give us?
So you could tell he's the subject matter expertise. Joseph Salzberg, I'm with Gray Robinson's Miami and Tallahassee office, and I've represented Isle of Maratha, Village of Islands every single day of my career, since I graduated law school in 2015, and it's something that's very special professionally and personally, as somebody who came down here as often as possible from Miami growing up. I grew up in Miami. I ran political campaigns for members of the legislative delegation out of Miami in the 2010 cycle predominantly, and including then a special election in 2011 for what would become a future Speaker of the House. Instead of going to lobbying at that time, I decided to go to law school at Florida State, even though I'm a hurricane, and I worked in the legislature as a staff attorney, although I was not yet an attorney, I worked as committee staff. So I obviously had the politic, political connections, got to understand the mechanics of the Florida House and the legislature, meet the legislative staff, which are some of the best government staff I've ever dealt with in my entire career, or at the state of Florida, and then was lobbying on contract my third year of law school. And I graduated, fortunately, all of those individuals that I had helped run their campaigns were in various degrees of leadership, including regulatory affairs chair, appropriations chair, which benefited this body at that time, and future speakers. And then I split my practice also between that and municipal representation. So that's a little bit about me, mostly the political side, the legal side, but, you know, Ryan and I are very different, and we work very well together, because we're not the same. We're yin and yang, so thank you.
Go ahead, Henry.
Over the last four years, I've been trying to get along with you guys, and I ask you questions, but you don't give me the right answers.
Okay.
In the past, you said you were not representing Sugar. If it wasn't last year, it was the year before, I gave you the name in your organization, who was representing Sugar. I assume that is not the case any longer. I hope you tell me that is not the case, but I followed up, and you did have somebody representing Sugar. The other problem that I have is we're paying you $108,000 a year. What have you done for us? Not the automatic stuff that the state decides to give us money for, such as clean water, and Peter will justify all that, but what have you gone to bat for us and said, "We did this for you"? That's my question for the last four years. You probably won't have to worry about it next year, but I have to say it again this year. What have you done to justify the $108,000?
I'd be happy to answer it, councilman. So this last legislative session in 2024, the village did not get any appropriations. There was a $300,000 appropriation for a fireboat that was vetoed by the governor. In the 2023 legislative session, the village received half a million dollars in legislative appropriations. And so in addition to what you talk about in terms of key stewardship funding, which is roughly $20 million per year, which, again, I understand we've had this conversation before, that you don't see as unique to the Village of Isle of Maratha, in 2023, there was half a million dollars delivered to the village. Those are the things that we are willing and ready to work on for you in the 2025 legislative session. If Wynn Staff and Mr. Cole have projects, not only in grants, but from a legislative appropriation standpoint, Representative Mooney and Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez have been very big champions for the Village of Isle of Maratha. We have worked with them to bring money back to the village.
No, I understand that, but I want to see you be creative, earn the 108, quite frankly. Just being there and going along with the tide, so to speak, doesn't separate you from the rest. And I just want to see you, I want you to come in here and say, we came up with this idea, it was our idea, we pushed for it, and you got it. That's what I'm looking for.
So, Henry, I want to say something, Ryan, because, Ryan, you've called me many times, okay, since I've been elected in 2020, and even when I came to Orlando or Tallahassee, you said, "There's a half a billion dollars sitting there." What requests do you got? Do you have shovel-ready projects? You've called our, one of some of our former staff that's no longer with us, and they told you, "We didn't have any shovel-ready projects," okay? That wasn't his fault. That's our fault that we didn't have that. So he can't help us if we're not willing to help our own self, okay? Now, he's there for us, and, you know, I call Ryan all the time and say, "Ryan, what, you know, what about this project? What about that?" Now, Mr. Cole's had a lot more communication with him, but it upsets me when I had dinner with him one night, and he said, "There's a half a billion dollars there, but you guys have no, you have nothing going in, you have no shovel-ready projects." Okay, that's not his fault, that's our fault, because if you don't ask, you can't receive.
I'll concede that to you, and you're absolutely right, that's our fault. The manager before this gentleman right here, the county comes to these guys, they have proposals.
Yeah, Henry, I know exactly what you're talking about.
The county does. Every year, the county, have we ever done that? No.
So I think, if I could, I think you're right. We really failed on that, and it's been made clear to us by this group that as an organization, we have failed on that, yet we continue to pay this group. And yet, I think that there's a change. As you recall, we went to Tallahassee, Mark and I were there, we came back, we had conversations with Mr. Cole. He understands how to work with the lobbyists, and what I'm hearing Mr. Cole say is that he is in the process of creating a legislative agenda. I don't know what else, I mean, unless we think he's lying, which I don't think he is, I think we are on the right track, but good point to say we have failed. But I don't think that it's really fair to accuse these gentlemen of not doing a job and coming up with projects for us. I mean, that is, that's on us. So I'm excited to think that we are moving in the right direction under the leadership of Mr. Cole, and my sense is that this group is quite responsive.
Had you not interrupted me, I was about to say the very same thing, just for your information, okay?
I appreciate that.
Okay, that's fine. So that's where we are. The other thing that I think of periodically, unless we change the method and we get back on the stick, which I feel with this manager, it'll get done. But I've always had a problem, because the same thing that the county uses you for, Key West uses you for, is repetition for what we're going to use you for. Why couldn't we just sit back and save 108, and when we need something for one particular reason, we pay for that? Would that be justified?
So, in my mind, councilman, if you'll allow me, again, when there are those unique projects that the village has put forward, such as 2023, where there were half a million dollars worth of projects that were brought back, that is going to differentiate you from Key West, from Monroe County. To your earlier point, Monroe County and the city of Key West establish a legislative agenda and then go given direction. So as an attorney and as a lobbyist, I can't act on behalf of my client without their consent. You know that, right? So again, I think you would be hard-pressed to find someone legitimately that would be ready at the waiting, who would be successful for you, who would say, "On Tuesday, I need you to go ahead and start this process," when it is a year-long process.
Okay, so if anything, our discussion has proven to be eventful. Well, some of these folks, I don't know, you're not here, I'm not here. Approval in the future, I feel that's going to take place. So having said that, next time you see me, I'll be sitting over there, okay?
I look forward to seeing you, whether there or over here, understand that your time is done.
So thank you very much for taking the time to show up, I appreciate that.
Of course.
I'm done.
I'd just like to say something. In the four years that I've been here this time, you know, we have to accept the blame at this dais for not properly asking for things and putting those, that's all on us, as we've said. But I think one thing that is very much underappreciated for what you do for us is on the defense side. And, you know, you've called us in the middle of the legislative session and said, "Hey, this thing's coming up, what's your position on there?" You know, there's all these legislative preemptions that try to take away our power. You guys are whispering in our ear, "Hey, watch this and do this one, let us talk this one." We had a difficulty when we were trying to get the swim zone legislation passed, and you were instrumental in rescuing that from the jaws of death. Those are not money things, those are protection things, and I know a lot of the things that you've done, you want to highlight some of those, that's fine, I mentioned the swim zone, but it's sad that no one really sees that and appreciates that. The other thing is that there are five municipalities plus Monroe County in the area of critical state concern that we're in here, and your firm is kind of a specialized, rarely, there's only a handful, if that many, that know this, that understand what it means, and, you know, Henry was trying to piggyback on some of the benefits that you provide to those others, but we're all unique, all of the municipalities, but we all share a general situation, common things. And so your expertise in that is instrumental in, you know, the protection side, the defense side, and then asking for things. So we got shot down by the governor, that's not your fault, so, but you got us there, you know, you got us to the finish line, so we thank you for that. But I just wish more people would be appreciative of your protective side, you know, you are a shield and a sword. So if you want to say a few words on that, be my guest, thank you.
Well, councilman, thank you. I do think the swim zone's a perfect example, because this was an amendment to a piece of legislation that happened, what was it, three sessions ago at this point?
2021.
2021, that really occurred in about week seven of a week nine legislative session. It proceeded and was placed onto another piece of legislation that was on the floor of the House of Representatives, and Representative Mooney was instrumental in working with what is now the future speaker come November of this year, to help alleviate that issue. But again, it is those crises that occur during a 60-day legislative session, which is part of the issue of a part-time legislature, the fact that, again, an emergency can arise in week four of legislative session. We are there beforehand to help with your elected representatives in Tallahassee, to tell your story, to tell your needs. We can only do that based upon a give-and-take conversation with you all. The communication has never been an issue, right? We have consistently communicated with the village for a number of years, but when it comes to those priorities, we are now seeing what was, you know, lacking in the last, quite frankly, 12 to 14 months.
Well, thank you, and that speaker you mentioned is going to, Danny Perez, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who you guys have a good relationship with.
Very good. Joseph grew up with Speaker Perez for many number of years, so we look forward to his leadership.
The only thing I'll add to is, keep in mind, your 2011, your vacation rental ordinance that is protected in statute by 2011 is targeted every single year. Make no mistake, that is the boogeyman, and it takes a lot of effort to say, "Hey, area of critical state concern or pre-2011 has to be carved out." And I just thought about that, Councilman Greg, because you talked about the policy side, which really can't be quantifiable, but it's really quality, you know, policy wins or losses.
And someone mentioned that, you know, there's automatic funds. Those stewardship funds are not automatic. You've got to keep your foot on those, or somebody's going to jerk them out from under you, and that's your job. You do that every year for us.
They are. I thank you. The pleasure of each presiding officer every two years.
That's right, that's right.
All right, anybody else have any?
I just want to say that I look forward to the next two years up here, working with you gentlemen and giving you projects. And with the exception of where you went to school, because I'm a gator.
I was there last year.
Okay, I want, I think you guys do a great job, and don't bring up that game, okay? But thank you very much for what you do for us, and I agree with what has been said, that you do a lot behind the scenes, and I know that, so thank you.
All right, with that said, do, if there's no more further discussion, do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, we have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you, Ryan and Joseph.
See you all soon. Thank you.
Mr. Cole's going to have a book this, we're going to have a book this time, okay? We're going to.
Joseph and I will be happy to be back before the start of the legislative session, we'll meet with each of you individually, we'll go over it, we'll discuss tactics, et cetera. Happy to do that.
All right.
Do some sports fishing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, safe travels. Okay, John, we're moving on to tab 17.
Tab 17 is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, approving change order number one to the agreement between Alamoata Village of Islands and ASAP Inc., related to the Green Turtle Hammock Preserve Basin Improvement Project, authorizing the village officials to implement the terms and conditions of change order number one, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds and providing for an effective date.
Peter.
Good evening, Council. So, ASAP Incorporated just completed the Green Turtle Hammock Basin Improvement Project that entailed the stabilization of the shoreline, the entire shoreline, encircling the basin there, as it's been heavily eroded and degraded, and that entailed riprap and also seawalling and bulkhead-ing, and they also installed a new kayak launch for us. So, the project turned out really nice, they just finished up, we're super happy with it. However, during the construction, they realized, the contractors and our engineers with CPH realized that the current dock that's within the basin there, it's an old wooden dock, that it was structurally becoming compromised, crumbling a little bit, it has wooden four-by-four pilings that were beginning to erode, or, yeah, erode at the water line, at the sediment line, sorry. So, we asked ASAP what it would take, should we look into replacing this? We asked them for an estimate for that, we feel they gave us a very reasonable estimate. The current dock within the basin, this is the only place where a boat can currently moor or dock right now. We do have boats that come in to use the preserve, and we do expect even more boats to come in once the pavilion project is done. Another reason we believe this is a good idea is because a dock is also a component within the current management plan for the property. And then finally, and maybe most importantly, we already do, right now, currently have both the federal and the state permits in hand to work within this water body, so that's huge for us. We are going to have to replace this dock someday, it's old, it's wooden, it's failing. So, if we're going to replace it because of those items I just laid out, now would be the time to do it. And ASAP is still somewhat mobilized there, they're very familiar, they just finished the works, it would kind of tie right into what they were doing. The top of it would be, the top of the new dock would be composite decking to match what we just did. So, for those reasons, we are recommending that we do move forward and remove the existing dock, construct a new dock using ASAP, and it would just be a change order, because we have a current agreement. So, you'd be approving the change order with this resolution, and we are recommending moving forward with it.
Thank you, Peter.
Is there more money involved? Did I miss something?
So, that's a good question. So, yes, the cost, sorry, I didn't mention the cost today. So, the estimate that was given to us by ASAP was $39,950. Again, for an eight-foot-by-20-foot dock, that's an extremely reasonable and fair estimate. So, the project, the main project, was fully grant-funded, however, we did not account for this. So, this cost would be, come out of the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee, that's our suggestion, or potentially the local government infrastructure sales surtax is another option to fund this.
Okay. Council, anybody have any other questions for Peter? Okay, all right, thank you, Peter. Public comment, we have any public comment, Marnie?
No, we do not.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Hear a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, Marnie, and a second by Council, Elizabeth Jolen? And would you call the roll, please?
Council.
She did, she beat you to it.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes, five to zero.
All right, tab 18.
Actually, we have a tab X that was at the request of the council last week.
Where is it? Okay, yeah.
It's, tab X is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, expressing opposition to the development currently being proposed on a portion of property located at 92501 Overseas Highway Key Largo, at approximately mile marker 92.5, currently having parcel identification number 00089490-000000, providing for transmittal of this resolution to certain people within the state and county.
All right, thank you, John, for correcting me on that, if I turned my paper or saw it. Is there any public comment for this tab?
No, there's not.
Okay, public comment is now closed, Council, any discussion? On this? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, just, this is really for Rob, so, just real quick, if this were to pass, would that be forwarded today, or tomorrow morning, to whom? To whom would that be forwarded?
Well, I would have to check with the county to see the appropriate referral, but I would certainly give it to the county administrator, and then I would check with Jennifer to see, okay, who at the county is handling the case and provide it to them as well.
In the resolution, there's a list of people that proposed to provide it to, it was the mayor and all the members of the B O C C, county clerk, the incoming county administrator, Christine Hurley, the acting county, you see, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that would have to be done tomorrow, assuming it, morning, right?
Yeah, I mean, the agenda item, it's scheduled to be heard tomorrow, yeah, so I would anticipate, even if it's not fully signed, that it should be forwarded over, or we could, if it's approved as is, honestly, we could just, you know, hand-sign it here tonight, so it's ready to go.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I've had some time to reflect on this, and I am going to say no, because I don't think it's our place as a governing body to tell another governing body how to handle their business. I, myself, am not a big fan of this Publix going in, but that's me as a person saying this. I don't think it's our place to tell the people sitting on the council for Monroe County or the commission choices to make, and so I'm no longer in favor of sending this, I'm sorry.
May I speak?
I feel the same as the Vice Mayor. I was supportive of this in general, in principle, I should say, at the last meeting, I made some remarks in that direction, but, again, upon reflection, just a few short months ago, we were in a crisis, and this county stepped up and provided us not with one, not two, but three interim managers, and they function more as a partner than as, you know, an adversary. And, you know, the old golden rule, do unto others, I wouldn't want them to tell us how to vote on something. Now, we have passed resolutions in the past opposing other governments' actions, those were in primarily Dade County or with the Water Management District, that's a different ballgame. I don't see the county as an outside adversary, those others, maybe they are. And just in principle, it would be disrespectful to them, because they have been very, very respectful and helpful to us. So, if, I think that each of us has an option to appear and speak individually, if that's our choice, and to express our thoughts and opinions, if that's our desire, but I don't know that it's the right thing to do for this body, and I would not be able to support this resolution.
Well, I'm going to get off of Publix, but I'm going to say, you know what, we've been talking about affordable workforce housing, and they got 86 housing going in there, the county's already got the units, they don't need them from us, they already got them. So, to me, that's workforce housing, that's somebody putting their money where their mouth is, and we sit around, I don't know, you know, how many years we've talked about doing workforce housing in Alamoata, and it doesn't seem to be happening. Alls we do is, we talk about it, we want to do it, we want to start a fund, and, you know, so, I can't go along with it either, and the other, one reason is, because I see Judy sitting right there. Judy called about, she couldn't get lighted, expanding generators, lights for the Christmas festival, remember Judy? I made one phone call to the county, in 10 minutes, I was able to call Judy back and said, for our Christmas festival, the night of the Christmas parade, and they delivered them, set them up, and came on Monday and took them down, Sunday or Monday, I can't remember when it was, but they backed us up. And on many other occasions, we've asked for favors for things, and, you know what, we need to be working together, that's the way I feel. I didn't want the Publix in Alamoata, on Upper Matacombi, I personally didn't go in there for a year until, after it opened, but because it, to me, I grew up not, we had to go to Homestead or to Marathon to go shopping. So, but anyways, I will say this, I, man, I commend them for doing the 86 affordable, not affordable, excuse me, workforce housing, because we desperately need it. And I'm going to back up to Hurricane Irma for a minute, because I found out that HUD was trying to get, they were willing to help with funding and permits, because I worked in Cudjo then, I was working for the Aqueduct as an underground utility contractor, and HUD had actually, had contacted several of us about finding someplace to build some big workforce housing, and it was, I don't even know what the number was, it was in the thousands, that they were, not all in one place, but in different locations, because we need workforce housing. Amazon's getting ready to employ 1,000 people in Homestead, and they're going to have benefits, they're going to be very well-paid, and they're also going to cover the, if you have a child that's going to college, from what I heard, they will cover the tuition in entirety, okay, as long as the grades are being made. So, where are all those people that are coming here now, and all of a sudden, when Amazon opens up, where are we going to get our people from? That come from, I did it, I ran two vans from Florida City and Homestead after Hurricane Irma, to try to get our jobs completed, and it cost us a lot of extra money to have vans running people back and forth from Florida City and Homestead. So, you know, our firefighters, our teachers, our police officers, they need a place to live, you know? And this is in the county, this isn't in the village, so I've said my piece, Henry, it's yours. You got the floor.
Thank you very much. I just have one comment to make. It took me well over a year to talk to Publix as to what they can do for us, and eventually I got to the hires-up, and with the help of our attorney and Publix attorney, they came out with a bag to save the plastic bags from being thrown in the water, they ordered 1,000 of them, they didn't charge for them, they gave them away. The other day, I was in there, and they have bags again, doesn't happen to have our emblem on it, which is not that big a deal, but I made it that way the last time, and once again, the bags are to save our fishing from those plastic bags. So, that's something they did. I worked on it for a while, eventually it got through, and I have to say thank you, and that's my only.
I want to commend you for staying on it and being proactive, and you got it done, and I, after you made that happen, I went in there and thanked all of them, you know, for what they did, but it was you that, you know, stayed the course.
Thank you.
So, anyways, with that being said, do I hear a motion for this, or?
I move to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
What's the motion, please?
The motion is to approve the tab.
To approve the resolution to send it to the county opposing their project.
We're telling Publix, we don't, we're telling the county, we don't like it.
We don't want it. Do I hear a second? Going once? Going twice? Three times? How much time we need, John, before a motion dies? Motion didn't carry.
Fails for a second, yeah, we just wanted a second.
All right, okay, so we don't need to go anywhere.
Well, I mean, I deal with it, I mean, since it's an agenda item, you can have a motion to reject the resolution.
Do I hear a motion to deny this, then?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Marnie, we have a motion to deny this. John, is that right? I want to make sure we're right here. We're going to deny this tab X.
Yeah, the, yeah, the resolution, yes.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to deny, so, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
The motion passes, four to one.
Okay, so now we are on, John, what are we on?
We're into our last item of, or last action item, which is an ordinance on second reading. This is an ordinance of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, amending Chapter 30, Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Environmental Regulations, Division 2, Docks and Shoreline Uses, Section 30-1542 of the Village Code, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Council, this resolution is before you this evening for second reading. You approved this resolution on first re, or this ordinance, I'm sorry, this ordinance on first reading at your August 8th meeting. This is the shoreline setback to allow tiki huts to be built on docks parallel to the shoreline on canals and man-made basins. This was the product of the variance that was before you several months ago, and the solution to the several number of existing tiki huts that potentially would need to be rebuilt if they were damaged or destroyed, and so this was our solution to that. So, this is, again, second reading after your first reading on August 8th, and I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, all right, hold on one second, I'm getting, because I knew, I'm looking at, I'm saying it says Mahoney, I'm going to, okay, I got it now, okay, all right. Sorry, all right. Thank you, Jennifer, any public comment, Marnie?
No, sir.
All right, Council, any communication, anything we want to discuss? Okay.
Move for approval.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, we have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal. Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, and, John, we tabled Sharon's, 19 and 20, right? That's why I was getting a little confused there, sorry about that. All right, what else? Where are we at now, so?
Before we adjourn, I've got two things.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have a thing?
I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that our Thursday night meeting begins at 4:30, not 5:30. Be advised, or you'll wind up late, like me the other days.
4:30?
When did that change?
I think we said we wanted to get started early, but if you'll look in the back of this packet, just behind that chartreuse pink page, you'll see the agenda, you'll see the first page, and it says Thursday, 4:30 PM, be there or be square.
When the council wanted to interview all of the candidates for the comprehensive plan, at that meeting, you asked for it to be scheduled at 4:30 that night.
We did, we did. Thank you, Mark, for reminding us.
You betcha.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Yeah, that was one of my issues, because, but that solves my problem, and then, just real quick, on the after-action report, I know we're not there, but can I just say something about that, in case you were going to skip over it? So, I just wonder if we're still using that as a tool? I know that, for example, Diane got up and asked, she made the recommendation about looking at the comprehensive vessel exclusion zone, but on the after-action report, it's actually just about sea oate beach, so I want to kind of get a handle on whether we're still using, it seems like some of those things are a little bit outdated on the report, are we still using that as a tool?
We talked about the very topic today, and the need to update some of them that are a little bit out of date, so yes, it is still being used as a tool with respect to the exclusion zone item, I'm sure Pete is going to go back and update that to be something that is more akin to what we heard this evening, and continue to track as we move forward on those various assignments.
Thing is, that that was a suggestion by the committee, but
Thing is, that, that was a suggestion by the committee, but it wasn't really discussed among this group, it was just a suggestion, so do we need to have that conversation? So, Diane, so, go ahead.
As far as what staff would do, is we would bring that back as part of a conversation that would take place with council, and not immediately begin to implement it, so, go ahead with the com, with that line of question, I just wanted to add that, that we weren't like automatically assuming that's our direction, because it was a, a committee report, but weaving it in, in a way that we have to have a touchstone on it in the future.
So, I'm a little confused by what you just said, but I think that the process is, you get a, if, you get a, a suggestion from the committee, we hear it, and then we say, yeah, we want you to pursue it, and then you bring it back, is that fair?
Fair.
Okay, so, we heard the suggestion from Diane, that their committee talked about the vessel exclusion zone at Sunset Beach, Sunset Drive Beach, and they said, no, we don't want to, the committee said, we don't want to look at that space specifically, and just close that beach, we want you to look, we want the village to look at a comprehensive solution for the entire coastline.
Right, they don't want to create another balloon.
Right.
From what just happened at Port Antigua.
Yeah.
Like Marlin.
So, so the question I would have, I mean, and I, and, you know, I think what we're trying to do is acknowledge and appreciate the work of these committees, so the question I would have to you is, do we want to ask staff to put this on the after-action report, and at some future point, bring this conversation back to us as, looking at it holistically, looking at our entire coastline? Because otherwise, it's gonna be gone, and it's just gonna be forgotten, so that is a question for you all, would we like to give that direction? Here's, okay, anybody else? Did you understand the, do, am I making myself clear, or would you like me to say that in another way?
I think we could benefit from having a review of the entire shoreline, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll agree with that.
Okay.
Henry?
Let's, let's do it.
What, Henry?
Doesn't seem to be the interest in time, you know how, how long this is gonna take?
Everything takes time.
I understand that, but the problem facing the homeowners is right now, not a year from now.
Well, so-
Am I right about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I just comment on that?
Of course.
So, one of the reasons that we utilize our committees is, is to go out and, and analyze some of these conversations in, in depth, and so what I heard Diane say is, I think what I heard her say, was that they had that discussion, and they said, rather than create another, a bigger problem, which, which really has happened, we closed Port Antigua, and now we have this problem over here, as soon as we prob, close this area, there's gonna be another problem in front of your front yard, or my front yard. So they have analyzed this, and this is their suggestion, so there's no decision tonight, except to say, do we want to acknowledge their work, and, and ask for this to, to just be entertained at a future point, I mean, heck, it might take a year.
Mr. Cole?
Um, just real quick, I think that our staff works closely with the volunteer committees, including the nearshore advisory committee, and my direction to Pete would be to, let's take a look at the request, come back with a recommendation that reflects both the committee's interests, and our professional staff's viewpoints and perspectives on next steps and what we can and can't do, so in, in brief response, yeah, that, that could be something that says, what's going on on the entire shoreline, and how do we deal with the microcosm of this particular beach at the same time? Let staff opine on that, after having discussed the matter with the, with the advisory council, and, and see where we go from there, but, it's not a definitive answer, but it's a conversation that needs to take place, and inform council's future consideration of the topic, using both professional staff and the volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, anything else?
Tonight's the presidential debate, nine o'clock, channel ten, bring your popcorn and watch the fireworks.
So, Henry, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
No, you don't, no, no. You know, if you want to deal with these individually, it's gonna take forever and ever, and we're gonna talk about every shoreline around the whole city, that's gonna take forever, and the people that are having the problem, that won't be addressed for a long time, so that's, that's where I have the problem. Now, if, if, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think we-
I get what you're saying.
Okay.
What you're saying is, I think, because this is so bad on Sunset.
Yes.
I think, at an degree, that we need to look at the whole, everything, but why can't we be looking at the whole everything, and unfortunately-
Emergency, the one that's the problem.
Just cut me right off.
And take care, take care of the one right now.
A hundred percent, I agree with you, so, can we sort of do two things at once, like juggle?
I, I think that might be possible, and, and as far as I'm aware, Pete is continuing to investigate the one that we already have an assignment to pursue, so there's nothing in this conversation I've heard yet that precludes continuing in progress on that specific beach, while at the same time engaging on the question of what do we do more broadly, because of the squeezing the balloon phenomenon, and that's the thing that I think requires a little bit more staff consideration, discussion with the volunteers, and, and reaching consensus.
Do we deal with this particular problem? He's, he's going to, you're gonna bring it back to us?
Prior direction from council was for staff to at least take a look at that particular beach, and begin investigating how we might go about addressing that issue, and I think Pete came and he did a presentation, if he's still here, I'm not sure, he's not here to come back and speak about it again, but, but he did relay a lot of information to council at that time, and we can come back with an additional update to see, you know, where we're at at present, but-
Know where they might go next, they might come in where you're going to Sappadilla Drive, and that big basin that Alonzo Cothran dug, they might come in there and just tie up, you know, how many boats, you know, like, 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 like when I went to Salt Spring Run, man, I came in there on a pontoon boat, and there was three hundred boats, I thought I was on my sandbar, at, at the head spring.
We can promise the people that are having the problem on Sunset Drive, that it will, that it'll be taken care of, but not until everything is done, we're not gonna put it out, put it off for all, at that length of time.
I get what you're saying.
You get what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying.
Henry, you know I was just teasing you.
Well, one-
That's where you live, that's your dock.
That's where I live, that's right, that's exactly right.
Go ahead, I have something after the, the manager.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that it's clear, I would not want to promise the people on Sunset Drive that we can solve the problem at this point, because that was part of what staff presented on last time, was they had to take a look at some of the complexities of the regulatory environment, including the bottom, and all the permitting, and the costs associated with it, so it was a commitment to investigate, not to solve, but with a hope of being able to solve.
Perfect.
But what I wanted to say is that we missed an opportunity with our lobbyists, if we'd thought of this, we could have asked them how they could help us at the legislative level to perhaps expand our jurisdiction out past the thirteen-hundred-foot limit that we have now, or to strengthen what we have within the thirteen-hundred-foot limit, we are seeing an increasing frequency of conflicts along improved shorelines, not the unimproved ones, it is unlikely that that is going to diminish in the near future or far future. So, I will leave it to the Vice Mayor and her role in November and thereafter to guide the council, and speak to the lobbyists, and save our village from the pirates.
That could be done now, too, I mean, it's not like you're not in communication with them, right? I mean, that, that's the direction.
Call them, when he, they're, those guys are flying, going back to Miami and flying out, give them a call, buddy, tell them, save us, save our butts.
Cole, you got their cell number, too?
Yes, sir.
That's a good call.
Okay.
I move for adjournment.
Now you move for adjournment, Henry, you sure? All right, are we good?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.